Good evening. It's 7:00 on Thursday, April 28. This is a meeting of the Bellebrook-Shurden Creek Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It's not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as identified in the agenda. Mr. Liman, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mrs. Dorn?
Here.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our first item is correspondence. Does anyone have correspondence that they wanted to share with the rest of the board? I did get a letter about vouchers, or there was a lawsuit that 100 districts had joined in together to oppose the vouchers, but that was the only thing that I got. All right, let's go on with reports to the board, Dan. Cam Schultz.
And Samantha.
And Samantha. Thank you.
Where do you want us to? We have a PowerPoint, so we're over here, is that okay?
As long as Matt can still be...
Yeah, he's got it though. So I'm Cam Schultz, I teach at the high school, and Samantha is one of my four wonderful members of the other TP. And this is the Bellebrook NHS Menstrual Health Initiative, that's a huge title for it. But the other TP name came from TP, we all know what TP is. The other TP is tampons and pads. So, we, the TED Talks, there's a youth TED Talk every day in Dayton, not every day, every year in Dayton, and Oakwood High School has a program that they started. One of the students in Oakwood did research on period poverty. There are a lot of students that don't go to school during their period because they can't afford products, and there's also women who don't go to work because they can't afford products, and she was really disturbed by this. So she did research and started a program at Oakwood High School. And after we learned about this, we said, we want to start this at Bellebrook. So I talked to Ally Lewis, who was a current junior at the time, and said, can you find three friends that would be interested in this program? And Samantha was one of them, and we started the project. So I'll let Samantha tell you how it got started.
So, you can read our thing, but the first thing that we did was really getting the word out, because we had to collect donations and then also like gather money for the containers that we were going to put them in. And we eventually got money from student paperwork for the containers. We still had to get donations for the actual pads and tampons. And then also we did bags, but that'll be on the next slide. So we had these posters, and then we did a lot of stuff on social media as well. The people on Facebook, like all the moms and stuff, they were really supportive and they got us a lot of products, which is really nice. And then, here we go to the next slide. We could organize, we got a lot of stuff at the beginning, so we organized it into seven bins, just based on, well, there was four for pads and three for tampons, just based on the different sizes. And then we got these containers off of Amazon, they're very nice, they're like meant for the kitchen, I think. But like their waterproof and all that stuff was just like what we needed. And the great thing is that they have this like sticky adhesive at the back, so you can like peel it off and stick it to the stalls in the bathrooms. So like, that's exactly what we needed. So every month, we, you know, we just stock, we put more pads and tampons in the bathrooms. We normally do this about like every week, every two weeks. At first it was like, not a lot of people used the products because like they weren't super familiar, so they were like, you know, not exactly confident on like us providing products. But now it's been, it's been a while, so like, the products get used a lot faster, so I would say like once a week, we refill them. And we put like four of each product in, well, sometimes more, because sometimes it gets a little too hard to like refill them like, you know, every week, so.
Depends on what type. Finals are coming and we're going to overstock.
Right.
Yeah.
But then it's like, it's a lot of work. Well, it's not really that much work, but if it's too much work for the one person that has to sign to that month, we'll just ask for help from NHS, because we are in an NHS like program.
Okay, so we are always looking for donations, because obviously this is something where we are using up our supplies on a regular basis. And there's many ways that you can help. You can drop off products directly at the high school office, and I give products in my room, on my desk, in my mailbox, on a fairly regular basis. And one of the other teachers told me one day that normally that would be considered bullying, but I get really excited about it, so anything that you want to donate is great. And also you can donate money to the, through Tamaritary. In the athletic office, we do have funds under, it's under NHS, but you can write a check, we take money, we take donations, whatever. We've had two major donations this year, so in addition to student council, they funded all of our containers. And we decided, instead of having one container per bathroom, we wanted it to be private because of period poverty. We don't know who can afford it, who can't, and we also want everybody to have free products, we don't want to delineate. So we didn't want somebody to feel uncomfortable if they need to, like before spring break, I did notice there was an uptick right before spring break, we had a lot more products gone, which is what we love. We have cosmetic bags that they can fill up, they can fill it for the weekend, they can fill it for the week, and we don't ask any questions. So we wanted a container in every stall in the high school, so that nobody knows who's taking how many products, nobody questions. We also have them in all the staff bathrooms, because again, we don't question whether there's a staff member who can't afford products that month, or doesn't have products, or whatever, so no questions asked. So student council did fund that from the beginning, all the containers, and we've had to replace, we had vandalism one time in the locker rooms, and we decided, because we have so many outside people, the only time we've had issues seems to be when there's non-Bellebrook people using the bathrooms. So in the locker rooms, we do just have one container in each of those, so we don't have to keep replacing containers. But we got $500 from the PTO, and we got $600 from BSEF, so we are very appreciative of both of those donations. We have been meeting with Brian Lampton, who is the Green County representative, talking to him about what we've been doing and trying to encourage all schools in Green County to have products. We have spread the program to the middle school. We've also talked to, Urbana Schools has started the program, and Franklin Schools, we've helped both of them get started. I know Urbana's not, I don't think either of them are Green County, but I just kind of, I sent out a message to any teacher that I knew across the area, and both of those schools were interested, so we're always above middle schools. Yeah, so we're always willing to talk to other schools and help them get the program started. Now that we've kind of, we know what works and what doesn't work, but Brian Lampton has met with us three times? Twice or three times? Oh yeah, so yeah, that's. Yeah, so twice, and he was really impressed with the four ladies talking to him, he was really impressed with all their knowledge and all their research that they've done. And he has spoken to Fairborn, his Fairborn Schools has a program similar to our Eagle Eats, where they provide food for families, and they're hoping to correspond, because we started, that was the other thing we forgot to mention, we've been providing products to BCI, to the families that we give food to on the weekends for Eagle Eats. We've been tagging up feminine products to them as well. But our goal is to go to the state and provide free products to all schools in the state of Ohio. That is our long-term goal.
And it's like surprisingly cheap. You can see in the past, familiar with this slide before that. This was like half of the products that we got from just the $500, right?
This was from BSEF.
Okay.
About a third of what we got for $600.
Right, so like, a little money goes a long way, this product, which is what is so nice, you know, like it's equivalent to toilet paper, we think. I mean, it's probably more expensive, but there's less people using it. So it's like, if it gets put in the school budget, which is like our goal, it's not really that much money.
We told Brian Lampton, we figured out, we calculated, and it's about $5 per student, so it would be about $2,000 for Bellebrook per year to provide free products. And we thought, if they're buying it in bulk, they probably get it cheaper, and that's us buying it on, you know, looking at sales and stuff, so I'm sure if they're buying it in bulk, it would be cheaper, and he was really amazed that it was so inexpensive. So, $5 per people, except for the startup cost. So he has already contacted Governor DeWine's office for us, and that's our next step, is to talk to, not Governor DeWine, because he said that won't happen, but his people, his people are going to contact our people. So I'm going to email this week as a follow-up and hope that that'll be our next virtual meeting, or face-to-face meeting, to talk to somebody that's doing the budget for next year. Any questions?
Do all the donations from the middle school come here, and then you, or do they accept donations separately?
Yes.
Do they have more things that are stocking and whatnot?
In the beginning, yeah, we got them started, we gave them products to get them started, and gave them cosmetic bags. We've had people make cosmetic bags, like hand-make cosmetic bags for us. We have a retired home ec teacher from here that sent us like 30 that she made, she was super excited about the program. So we got them started with a bunch of bags and product, and now they take their own donations, yeah, because we can also donate to middle school.
They have NJHS, just like we have NHS, so like, it's the equivalent kind of thing.
And theirs is smaller, because they're middle schoolers, they thought that the vandalism, that they wouldn't be mature enough to handle it in every stall, so I think they started, I think theirs is per bathroom, is what they were going to do to start out, just to see kind of how it went, so.
Have you talked with the Community Support Center, the Bay Harbor?
The, yes, we give, yeah, we give them our donations that we can't use at the high school, so anything that's not individually wrapped, we can't use. So there's been several donations that we've gotten, or people buy the wrong products, so we have been able to do several donations for them.
That's good. You speak well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Liman? Thank you. Green County Career Center update?
Yeah, thank you. I'm Adam Ramehily, like Dr. Cooper said, from the Green County Career Center, got a couple of good news stories. Jeremiah Andrews, a Bellebrook student, along with one of his teammates, got eighth place in the website design contest at the 2022 Business Professionals of America State Leadership Conference, so that was a good thing, you know, website design, you won't have any problem to get in the job. Also in that category, Nathan Carson in aviation maintenance was recognized as a National Technical Honor Society member. So with the rise of aviation and all of the UAV work they're seeing around here, you know, again, a good opportunity for Bellebrook students. 7:00 PM on the 24th at the Nutter Center will be the recognition, will be the graduation ceremony for Green County Career Center, so I will be there.
When's the date, yeah?
The 24th of March at 7:00 PM, sir, at the Nutter Center. And then finally, and something that you guys will appreciate, the Green County Career Center successfully negotiated a new contract with their teachers, good through July of 2025. So that was good news, and it was very smooth in both the staff as well as the administration, where negotiations went smooth and they were able to get it done. So, are there any questions for me?
Are you still finding it rewarding to continue doing it?
Oh yeah.
How much time do you spend doing it?
It's, you know, I probably, maybe a couple, three hours a month, you know, going to the meetings. What's really been enlightening is some of the various programs that they have going on out there, like before the school board meeting, we went out to the automotive shop, and the kids gave demonstrations on what they were doing. One of the programs that they've done for students that was also, you know, was just neat to see, was some of the special needs students, they created this class to help them, not only them, but other students interact, writing a resume, you know, interacting in an interview, learning to look people in the eye, shake their hands, you know, it's a lot of these things that, and the regular students as well as the special needs students were involved, and you had both of them together learning. They had a prom, where they went to prom together as part of this class. They did a lot of things from a social skills, and developing those professional skills that, you know, in today's ad fin of computers and phones and Twitters and Facebooks and all of those things, the ability to look somebody in the eye, shake their hand, and have a conversation, not a lot of people get. And so it's those kind of things, Mr. Price, that I just think they're doing a great job of preparing students for life, and, you know, whether it's robotics or the UAV program that they have, they're constantly innovating, and there's a lot of great opportunities for students, and they're really trying to do a great job of not, you know, I'll call them burdening students with tens, hundreds of thousands of dollars a student loan debt. And so they're really doing a lot of great work there. So I still believe in it, I still enjoy it, I'll do it for as long as you want me to.
We're really, really glad you're there. Are you still working at ARL?
Yeah, I'm still in lab there.
Have you seen any opportunity for, you may have some connectivity between what's going on out there and what's going on in the lab?
Yeah.
I mean, COVID was a huge barrier, but maybe now there's.
Right, it's start, you're starting to see more of it, you know, and there's some summer programs, you know, and with, a lot of the information technology that they've got going on out at the Career Center, you know, when you look on base, there's a lot of opportunities for that information technology, and it was the same with the aviation maintenance, they started that aviation maintenance, maybe not as tied to the base, but with the rise of, you know, the aviation career fields outside, you know, outside of the base, there's been a lot of opportunities there as well. So they're, they do poll the community quite often with what skillsets are they looking for.
If you, look for me in the gal.
Yeah, I will.
If you're also working, or also, maybe there's opportunities in the area where I worked.
Oh yeah. Yes, sir, I'll be in touch.
Hands-on, so, seniors and things like that.
Absolutely.
Just also to piggyback on what you're saying, from your last board meeting, we're expanding the engineering here at the high school through the Career Center this year, or next year. This year was the middle school.
Yep.
Was our first year, and then next year will be the high school engineering, and hired for those two positions is current engineering teacher at the high school here, Blake Barnes, but then also our middle school math teacher here, LA Physic Nanny, is also now the second person that's hired here for engineering.
Oh, that's us, Andy.
Through the Career Center. So she's actually still going to teach a couple classes for us at the middle school, so we're kind of splitting her a little bit, but then she's spending the rest of the day here at the high school. The program's about, needs about one and a half, one and three quarters of a teacher or so here, so it's a win-win for us, of being able to still retain her for a couple periods at the middle school for math, and that she's going to spend the rest of the day here engineering, hopefully grow that program even more to, for two full-time positions.
Yeah.
So, that's going to be upwards for savings for us, have an initial of projected about $750,000 with, talking about personnel over the next few years, and also all the new equipment and things that we're getting from the Career Center, so it's a good partnership.
Yeah, they do a good job of keeping the newest and latest equipment, you know, the people that work in the welding shop, or the robotics, or the UAV labs, you know, they have the latest equipment, they go out into the real world sometimes and it's not nearly as nice. So yeah, I'm excited about the engineering program, because it's been a big success at Beaver Creek, you know, I don't like taking a backseat to Beaver Creek, I think we can be just, sorry, you know, I'd rather see us be just as good, if not better, so, yes, sir. Anything else?
Thank you very much. Thanks, sir. All right, going on to the board committee reports. Mr. Kinsey, anything for the legislative liaison?
Sure, I just have kind of a punch list here, we can run through, just a quick introduction to some bills that may perhaps be of interest. As I said the last time, none of this is me endorsing or not endorsing anything, the board is not endorsing anything. Just a real quick introduction, and in case you're wondering, I try really that all this language is right from the text. But I have a bunch of bills which are still pending, I talked about in February, if you want to see me about those, we can talk about them, but this is just new stuff. Since we last talked, some bills that have been signed into law, there was Senate Bill 135, this bill requires school districts to include in career advising policies information on career fields with associate degrees and certificates in the Reserve Officers Training Corps. HB 95 was signed into law, that appropriates $338 million in fiscal year '22 to the federal school lunch program. House Bill 126, really what it does is it modifies and it limits the manner by which local governments may contest property values. This includes prohibiting boards of education from filing residential and agricultural complaints. I talked with Mr. Liman about this, just because I didn't know, this doesn't really apply to us, because apparently we never have done that, at least in a very, very, very long time, but that's something of interest to know. House Bill 597 provides capital reappropriations, including approximately $442 million for local school construction through the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, and they've received some kind of prior conditional approval. Governor Mike DeWine signed into law Senate Bill 9, this bill requires the Ohio Department of Education and other state agencies to reduce regulatory restrictions by 30% by 2025. It's going to be interesting to watch how that gets fleshed out.
That, I'm sorry, are these all been, are these on the table?
These have all been signed into law, as everything I just listed has been signed into law.
Say the last one again.
Sure. Yeah, Senate Bill 9. It requires a 30% reduction in regulatory restrictions by the Department of Education by 2025. Sometimes we did paperwork and mandates and things we have to do that takes away from teaching, and let's see how that shakes out, that will be interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah. The next one on my list, really the last one on my list, has not been passed, it's just very recently been introduced, House Bill 616, and it deals with the promotion and teaching of divisive or inherently racist concepts in public schools. So if passed, the law will state that, this is quoted here, "The school district board shall not select any textbook, instructional material, or academic curriculum that promotes any divisive or inherently racist concept." And then the law goes on to actually define very explicitly, there's a specific list of what is divisive or inherently racist, and quoting again that list, it's critical race theory, intersectional theory, the 1619 project, diversity, equity, inclusion, learning outcomes, inherited racial guilt, and then any other concept that the state board of education defines as divisive or inherently racist. And as I said, I've moved on over seven or eight before in February, I still have those, but they have not moved, they're still pending, so. If you have any questions, if I could point in more information, we'll go.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Mrs. Dorn, anything from BSEF or financial advisory?
Yes, so Financial Advisory Committee has not met since the last time I updated you all on that committee. BSEF, the biggest thing going on with BSEF right now is on May 14th, there is a color run scheduled. Explain that for those who are unfamiliar with a color run. It's a 5K, but it is not necessarily a 5K, that's run as fast as you can, because you're going to want to slow down at periods of time to get splattered with colored chalk powder. You should wear white, so that at the end you look festive, and it's something, I mean, people surely will run it fast, but lots of people will run it with little kids, walk it with your stroller, and along the route, there will be different stations where you get colored up. And so it's really just a fun time thing, May 14th, and that route will start here in this complex, I think more toward BCI, we'll head up and down through Cables Mill, through a pretty familiar 5K route that some other 5Ks typically take, and then head back here. So something fun the weekend before graduation, and it's a fundraiser for BSEF, because BSEF hasn't been able to have a decent fundraiser in a couple years due to all the COVID conditions, so I'm hoping to get a good turnout, and hoping you can all come and either run it or be a color sprayer, or sit at the registration desk. I think a lot of kids will get a kick out of seeing, not us, they don't care about us, but seeing their teachers out there getting messy, or getting them messy, or, you know, their principals or whatnot, so hopefully we get a big turnout from the staff as well. And that's pretty much it for right now from BSEF.
It's onsite registration at 8:30.
It is onsite, so yeah, come, off the top of my head, I do not remember, there's a, you know, it's a fundraiser, so you pay a fee and get your number and go have fun.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Price for SCPE Committee?
Yeah, we haven't, as well, have not met since the last time we talked about committee reports. However, we are having a meeting in the morning. Since the last meeting, the Green County engineer has done a lot of good work researching out, especially the situation over here on Feedwire. It's real, as you know, you've heard me at all, I was going to talk about that, concerned about it. I think they've actually made a few changes already, a couple changes, that, you know, there's like a arrowhead with the school speed limit in 2020, but they're also going to move the 45 mile an hour speed limit back, it's not supposed to be within 500 feet of the school entrance, so currently it violates the standard for that. We're hearing as well about the lowering of the lights on Feedwire, and then, and when that's done, hopefully, we'll get more details in tomorrow's meeting, but we hope to see the speed monitoring lights, or systems that basically give feedback on speed, and those would be active during, when the school zone is active, not all the time, where people will be desensitized to the fact that flashing happens, but when the school zone light comes on, it comes on, and it will give me feedback on their speed as they go through there. And so I think those are, you know, all those things added together are significant mitigation steps. We're never going to have a perfect solution there, but it will go a long ways towards, I think, addressing concerns. If we are successful in obtaining those speed monitoring systems for Feedwire, I think we should also consider those along Upper Bellebrook here, because it's so long there, and people will exit, you know, the school and then accelerate 45 miles an hour as they head to BCI or whatever. And so, things we can do to just, you know, remind people where you are, you know, I think will help a lot. We're going to have some attendance tomorrow as well from the city representatives, because we have some crosswalk issues downtown in Bellebrook, a few solid news, but there was a teenager that was hit, hit and run last week with a bicycle, I have no idea the circumstances surrounding that, but it just underscores the fact that we have pedestrians that, you know, are at risk, and especially children, my gosh, the little kids that are crossing down there, and we don't, there are not adequate sidewalks down there, and so this is an opportunity for the township and the city to kind of blend their efforts together and create a safer walking community, not just for the kids, I mean, mostly that's my focus, is adults you know enough to look before they cross the street, but young kids, not so much, you know, so I'm really optimistic ultimately that we're going to have a good outcome for this, and I just hope we don't find that there are funding issues or, you know, other issues that are going to prevent those speed monitors, because I think those are a crucial part of the solution for Feedwire, so I'm hoping to get your news on that in a moment, and we'll report back.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Any questions for Mr. Price? All right. Mr. Kinsey, anything on the business advisory?
Yes, sir, we also have that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead and open the presentation.
Hi, I understand I have three minutes, so I'll try to be quick. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jeff Rousch. For those who do know me, I'm still Jeff Rousch, but just a little less exotically. So I want to talk about something that is apparent, really makes me nervous, and it's connected to House Bill 616, we'll see what happens with that. I'm really concerned with the idea of banning or curtailing the books that are available to students. And part of this is books that are just available in the library, which I think are separate from the curriculum-based notions in the bill. Part of it is also a concern that teachers are going to be constrained a lot in what they do. When you're talking about CRT, I think it's important to define When you're talking about CRT, I think it's important to define what you're talking about. You know, are you saying we can't have teachers teach the complex theoretical constructs that go into the ways, lens through which some theorists view the world? Great, okay. That's, I know my kids aren't ready for that. I went to law school, and I'm not sure I'm ready for that either. But what can they talk about? Can you study the 1950s without looking at race relations? Can you read Huckleberry Finn without talking about race relations? I think it's going to be really important to back up the teachers and give them support and give them firm direction on what they can and can't do. I think the idea that we're going to go in with a, my concern is that we go in with a broad scope and basically keep the teachers from being willing to ask questions or present materials that even open up discussions. When you're talking about what's inherently divisive, high school life is inherently divisive. Middle school life is a jungle. What can you talk about? If you're talking about the LGBTQ community, I have a child who is part of the LGBTQ community, I think, I know many people who do. A student told me once, I don't think that there's anybody who's completely straight anymore, which was an interesting concept, and I think a fair amount of wisdom in that from a 15-year-old child. It's a different world right now, and I worry that if we're looking at ways that we're going to make, make less materials, less material available, less information available, what you're basically doing is tearing down the idea of what a public school can and should be. If we're really going to be open to educating all our children, letting our children learn, grow intellectually, I think that if this bill passes, I understand that the board and the teachers have to abide by it. I think we need to do so with open eyes, with a willingness to defend the teachers and watch those gray areas, and that's you kicking me out. So I am happy to stop talking. I'm also happy to entertain any questions, build a further discussion out of this, not necessarily now, I know you're on a time crunch, but I will probably reach out to you at different times just to extend this, and something that's very important.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
All right. Dr. Kozad, a superintendent's report.
Yep, new business job descriptions, recommended approval, the support staff job description revisions to technology specialists, and a new job description for lunchroom playground recess monitor.
We have a motion to approve.
So much.
Mrs. Dorn.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson.
So again, just to further explain, these were presented as first reads at the last board meeting, and so the technology specialist position is really, coordinates the digital literacy program at an elementary level with students, also provides some tech assistance to both students and staff, but a vast majority of their time is working with the digital literacy and facilitating that with students. And so, and then the lunchroom, assistant playground recess monitor, that is a new job description that just clarifies that particular role of that specific position. And we have those at both Stevens Bell and BCI right now.
Any questions? Any questions?
I don't take exception to any of this. I guess the only question I have is some of the things on the technology one, some are strike crews.
Yep.
Where did, where did that work go to? Is that being picked up by another?
No, really, it was, it was just a, a lot of it, or some of it, either went to the rest of the tech department because we went from more maybe site-based kind of things to more district level, like keeping track of inventory, those kind of things, those things are more done at the district level, or things were just better clarified in these things. But that work, because these positions were ripped a few years ago, and so that work then went, and the digital literacy piece went away also, and so that work went to the district level. So some of it's that, or some of it's just better, better worded on here.
That's what I was thinking.
Number 18 has struck out, says assistant purchase of software and online application licenses. Is that just kind of been overcome by events, by the use of Google for our classrooms, that we really don't need to buy software for sale these days? Is, is that actually provided by Google? I have no idea. Is it provided free of charge, or some, some cost for the Google?
Well, again, that is done more at the district level rather than the building level of assisting in the purchasing of that.
Got it.
But the Google suite is, is free to us.
Pretty much, they can make a lot of money off of that, right? I mean, they, schools pretty much are using throughout the country, I believe.
But Chromebooks also.
But there are other software and online application licenses, I assume.
Yep, yep, you know, so now, right, and also just, there's possibly some apps, just like on your phone, there's apps that do certain things, and it could be just regular applications, it could be online programs that are technology-based that students are using. So apps is kind of a general kind of word for applications, either, you know, at the local level or, or also online and more of a, in the cloud.
My kids love CoolApp.com.
And is there a reason for number 15 on the back of the first page? It says values education and importance to student learning.
Say it again.
Is there a reason why that's been struck?
That kind of moved to number two and reworded a little bit. So that's why, yeah, it crossed out a little.
Because I think if they're going to work in education, that's a component of it.
Right.
A lot of them just moved to a different section.
Yeah, moved to a different section than when you're using.
You want to make it consolidated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when you move things around, it makes you cross it out, you know, it's moved to somewhere else.
I figured you'd think that was important.
Yeah, definitely.
Still true.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, Mr. Liming, please call and roll.
Okay, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so more camps here, so Summer Athletic Camp 2022, recommend approval of following 2022 Summer Athletic Camps, survival team at OSU, boys' basketball at Finley, and girls' basketball at Finley-Nelson.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kinsey?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson?
And again, just trying to get back to kind of pre-Covid situations where we have our student athletes going away for camps and so forth. So kind of been on hiatus for a year or two here.
Any, any questions, comments? All right, Mr. Liming, please call and roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes.
All right, C, or out-of-state travel, recommend approval of following out-of-state travel, girls' basketball, again, this is varsity only in June.
Do we have a motion?
So much.
Mrs. Anderson?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn? Questions, comments?
Is this one they've been through before?
Um, I am not sure if they've been through this enough. Again, it's been a few years since they've done two of these things.
They're in the chaperones, right? Like the whole court.
Or one would be nice.
Yeah.
So I think they have in the past, I'm just not sure it's a regular every year kind of thing. More of the, you know, at Finley, is that's more the regular kind of thing, or local.
All right, Mr. Liming, please call and roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm going to go over to the hand carrier. So new business, certificated license deployment, resignation leave absence, supplemental duty. So we'd like to do a consent agenda for these two items. So recommend the acceptance of resignation for the purpose of full Ohio SDRS retirement for Counselor Kelly Anderson, effective end of day July 29, 2022. And recommend acceptance of resignation from middle school teacher Allison Fiziknanny, effective end of day August 14, 2022.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kinsey?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn? Questions or comments?
Yeah, I had to dig in this a little bit, I was a little shocked to see Allison resigning, and I was like, oh, you know, then I got to her letter, and it's like, oh, it's actually good.
Yes.
So.
Like I said, she's, she's teaching still a couple of classes, it's a middle school geometry class, and she's 712 certified, so still a challenge your class to middle school and then, and eighth grade math, I believe.
Yeah, this GCC thing is awesome.
Yeah.
So really glad that was found, and glad we're keeping, able to keep quality teachers that we really value as well. We value all of them, but I just, I've had particular dealings with hers, so she'll do a nice job.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Liming, please call and roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, items of information, so first read job description, projector of special education. So again, a lot of this, as you see strikeouts, will just clarify some of the roles there or work things a little differently, but also you're going to see a strikeout of the preschool pieces, that's because we contracted the ESC for our preschool supervisor, so that's no longer a part of this role. And then, so that's why you'll see preschool stricken, struck out in there, stricken out. So then we'll, we'll bring that back for final read in the May board meeting. I think if you have a question on that between now and then, just give me a call.
All right. All right, we don't have anything else on our agenda. So do we have a motion for adjournment?
So much.
Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? Need to debate? All right, Mr. Liming, please call and roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Motion passes, we are adjourned at 7:43.
Four minutes past our record, right? So at least our recent record.
That's right. Moving on.